Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for November 3, 2022. I'll take a moment to just ask if everyone would be so kind as to silence their cellphones or put them on vibrate. I'll take a moment to introduce the members of the zoning board, starting from my right, or the audience's far left, is Gerald Potamus, who is an associate member. To his left is Frank Duffy, our newest full-voting member of the board. Coming towards the center is Mark Federin, a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I am the chair. To my left is Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk and a full-voting member. And at far end is Scott Peterson, who is also a full-voting member. Also joining us this evening is Noreen Stockman, zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes, as well as the town zoning bylaws, in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements. They can include an opinion in favor or opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information is presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. The board shall discuss the proposals amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, example 3 to 2, is a failure to carry and will result in a denial. Any zoning board of appeals decisions may be appealed as provided in Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 17. First up this evening, ladies and gentlemen, we have an executive session. As the chair, I'm making a determination that the discussion concerns strategy with respect to current litigation, and that open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, and then to come out of executive session, once we're concluded pursuant to General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to meet with Town Council regarding appeal 61-20 Ecoland Development LLC, zero Percival Road, Lot 4, and T-Ticket. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to enter into executive session.
Let's use your second. Roll call vote, please.
Jerry Potamus, aye.
Duffy, aye.
Federin, aye.
Morris, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Peterson, aye.
It's a vote. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, we're going to play chair aerobics here for a few minutes, and I have to ask everyone to step outside until we conclude executive session. Thank you. Welcome back. Thanks to everyone for your patience as we got through executive session. Next up on the agenda is public comment. This is comments on anything that is not specifically referenced on tonight's agenda. Are there any public comments this evening? Seeing none. Next up is continuations. We have none this evening. So we'll get into new hearings. First on the list is 8522 Kula D'Angelo, 9 Sycamore Street, T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the nonconforming, single-family dwelling. There is a request for continuation this evening, I believe.
That's correct. We have a request for continuance for 9 Sycamore. They're continuing to work on plan changes, and they have an extension for a hearing with conservation. So we are proposing to continue that meeting to December 8.
Request to continue to 12/8. How would the board like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to continue to, you said, December 8?
Yes.
December 8? Is that you, Scott?
Ask a question, Claire Frank. Any of the audience here neighbors from Sycamore?
Okay.
We have had connections with various people that are in the neighborhood, and to the extent possible, we were able, I think, to notify most interested parties. So they understood we weren't going to proceed with the hearing tonight.
So, okay.
Motion's made to continue. Second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Continue to 12/8. Next up, application 08622 Gilfoi, 119 Davisville Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to add an accessory apartment to the existing detached garage.
We have Alex Gilfoi of 119 Davisville Road, East Falmouth, Mass. He applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-23I of the Code of Falmouth to add an accessory apartment to an existing detached garage on the subject property known as 119 Davisville Road. And we have comments. We do have it had one special permit in 87, and it's in the Green Pond overlay. And other than that, we had no comments. That's all I have, I think. Let me check Engineering. Engineering, here we go. The application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights ways and public utilities. Davisville Road is a public right-of-way. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Number three, the project does not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abuttes, or the public right-of-way. Four, dry wells are shown for the new roof, as we typically recommend. Number five, the accessory apartment will require an address assignment, which would be issued prior to the approval of the building permit. Based on the town's address policy, the accessory apartment address would be 119 Davisville Road, Apartment A. We recommend the following condition to be included affixing the illegible numbers on the dwelling. Number six, note that we reviewed this project for the planning board. Our review is attached for your records. The following pertained to the planning board review. Parking information was added to the plans. There are four parking spaces shown, one of which is in the existing garage. As noted above, dry wells are added. And they went before the planning board, it looks like August 2nd, and were approved.
I just note on the record that the, there's a significant set of conditions that were imposed by the planning board. They're in the file.
Yep. And I think that's, oh, wait, wait. Oh, the water department. Accessory apartment must have its own 1-inch water service with a 5/8 meter inside the apartment. Water line must be shown on the plans. The new water line in existing builder sewer crossing must comply with the DPW standard plans and specs for the construction and installation of water distribution and waste water system, horizontal and vertical separation requirements. Revised plans and details complying with the DPW separation distance requirements shall be submitted with the new water service application. And I think that's, I think that's all I have. Yep, that's it.
Good evening, for the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Alex Gilfoi. I reside at 119 Davisville Road. I'm here, as you guys heard, to seek approval to build a 20-by-20 detached apartment at my property. So currently, right here, that I'm, right here is the existing house with 119, and here is the garage. And we are proposing to add a 20-by-20, 200 square feet apartment, one-story, off the garage. So, as well, I have a floor plan. See, the garage will be off to the right here, with our apartment off to that. The purpose I'm doing this for, it's not for rental purposes. I'm planning on, I purchased the home, it was my family's home, just under a year ago, and me and my mother lived there. And I'm taking, we're currently rehabbing the entire house. It's, it's, it's over 100 years old, and it's never been refurbished or anything, so we're giving it a nice, well-deserved update. And also, we wanted to, you know, give my mother a nice place to stay. So that's going to be this cute little apartment just for her. So, back to the floor plan, or the plot plan. We, here's our proposed water line, right here, and sewage will be coming off the septic right here. And, yeah, that's, that's the gist of it, I'd say. Any questions?
Scott, start with you.
It looked like you were doing a nice job on the house. Just wanted to confirm, there's four bedrooms, three in the main house, and one in the accessory.
That'd be correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I have some pictures as well, I could show you. So, yeah, this is the front of the garage, nothing, nothing too exciting there. The other side, the north side, sorry about that, south side. This is where we're planning on attaching the apartment to, 20-by-20, extending just, just before the beginning of here, with a four-foot porch coming off of that.
One, there are four bedrooms in the dwelling right now, in your house?
No, there's three.
There's three, no, there's not four.
There was originally four.
Okay.
And since we've been doing the rehab to the house, we decided to take out a bedroom and replace that fourth bedroom with the apartment.
So you opened up the door, and it's got a wire casing. Okay, that's all I have.
Mark?
Other than the fact you didn't mark your stakes, which is acceptable, because you don't do this every day of the year, I saw nothing wrong with it, actually. I think it's kind of nice.
Thank you.
Frank?
I went out and I looked at the site, and I think it's suitable for this project, and there's no impact in the neighborhood, so I'm okay with it.
Jerry?
No additional comments.
I have no comments. Public comment.
Not bad for a rookie.
I'll take it.
How would the board like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Mark. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote. 5-0 opposed? No, didn't hear anything. How would the board like to proceed now?
Quick board discussion. I think, to echo Frank's comments, I think it's a good application and a good use of the property, and it's well-laid out, so.
Thank you.
I'd agree, the lot's very, obviously sufficient, 46,742 square feet. There's no opposition, so I'm in favor.
I'm completely in favor, and I'd like to see many more of these.
Frank or Jerry, any comments to add to the discussion?
Done commenting.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve? Second?
Findings?
Findings, I have, it's in an RC zone. It's in the Green Pond overlay, no flood zone. It's got over one acre, public road. The one thing I didn't find in here was the total lot coverage of structure and paving. Maybe it was me.
Second.
That I didn't search. Here it is.
2.9% existing, 3.8 proposed. Structures, paving, and parking, 6.0 existing. What's proposed is 9.5, 40% allowed by, right, so.
So we're all set on that? All set on that?
Backyard.
That's all we have?
240, 23, and I'm going to have to defer to the, I can't, this was an I or a T? It's an I, all right. Glad I got clear. Applicant looking to add accessory apartment to an existing detached garage. Existing garage is 12 by 24, what is proposed is 20 by 24. But then put in parcels, 46,742 square feet. It does a town conservation land. Applicants proposing a one-bedroom accessory apartment. Can reference the 87 special permit. There is a planning board decision. Any other findings?
Would I help review this?
No.
But they're going to have to anyways.
Yeah, why don't we just put in that there was, testimony was that the existing home has four bedrooms. One bedroom is being reduced to accommodate the...
For the applicant.
For the applicant, and Board of Health can verify if need be. Other findings? Conditions?
The usual, the work hours.
Per plans, hours of operation.
Water lines.
Water department comments. Can incorporate the planning, planning board decision and conditions into.
Yep.
Do we incorporate the prior special permit conditions as appropriate?
As appropriate, sure.
Applicant said three bedrooms, they're removing one. That's it.
Does the board want to condition a case opening of the reduction of bedrooms, the inside of the house?
I think that's appropriate, yes.
All right. Have we forgotten anything?
I think we're good.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have application 08722 Maw, 11 Narragansett Street, T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to construct additions and attached garage exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
I have David J. and Janice M. Mar, 23 Darlene Drive, Bridgewater, Mass., applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to construct additions and an attached garage exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure on the subject property known as 11 Narragansett Street, T-Ticket. And, if I recall, there wasn't that much. Lot size is 7,200 squi, is that right? 7,200?
Yes.
Square feet?
Yep.
It's an RC zone. Let's see what I have. Nothing for marine engineering. The application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Narragansett Street is a public right-of-way in this area. The alterations proposed to the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition, if the special permit is included. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit. Note that the driveway as shown on the plans would not be approved for a driveway permit. Any connections or alterations, number three, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Number four, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abuttes, or public right-of-ways. Number five, dry wells are shown for the new roof, as we require. Six, where there is a small lot with work proposed near a abuttes and the town right-of-way, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls and a construction entrance be included for this project to protect the off-site properties. The plans do include a demarcated limit of work, but no information on how it will be demarcated, and there doesn't appear to be erosion or sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included. Construction, quotation, construction of this project should follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. The document can be found in the Engineering Division's page. Since we require the erosion and sediment controls as part of the driveway permit, we will oversee the implementation of them for this site. And then we have CONCOM, negative determination. Fire department, no comment. Property is on towed sewer, allowed four bedrooms from the health department. The water department, water line must be shown on the plans, including separation from the sewer line. Currently, it's a 1-inch service that feeds this property from a 6-inch AC pipe. Planning, no comment. And that's, and no letters, I think, no letters. That's it.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before I start, I want to echo a lot of the comments that I've heard, just welcoming Mr. Duffy to the board. I think it's a wonderful addition, and I wish you the best here. For the record, my name's Kevin Klauer. I'm an attorney here in town, and I am here tonight representing David and Janice Maw, the owners of 11 Narragansett Street. They are seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling by an addition on the western end of the existing home. This will slightly expand the family room, add a small front porch, and create a one-car garage. This property at 11 Narragansett Street is located approximately midway down the Maravista Peninsula. As this board knows, it's a very dense residential neighborhood. There's a variety of lot sizes within that neighborhood. This is a fairly typical and representative lot, 7,200 square feet. It is in the RC zoning district. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a shed. Footprint is just about 1,350 square feet. It's nonconforming to the front yard setback at 18 feet 4 inches, where 25 is required. It's otherwise conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements both by structure and by structures, paving, and parking. The existing ridge of this property is 21 feet 9 inches. The proposal is a single-story addition, again, at the western part of the dwelling. It would add a small front porch located just about here, slightly expand the family room in this area here, and there is a proposed garage, one-car garage. This proposal does not create any new nonconformities, though the lot coverage by structure will be increased. It will not be nonconforming with the issuance of a special permit. The proposed ridge height of the garage is 17 feet 8 inches, which is lower than the existing ridge. However, due to those existing, due to that existing nonconformity, this does require a special permit under both 243C and 24069E. Under 243C, the board may allow for changes to pre-existing nonconforming structures by special permit, provided the board finds that the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240216, and whether or not that alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. As I noted, there is no new nonconformity created, there's no change to the views and vistas, and it does conform to the neighborhood, as we'll discuss. In the residential C zoning district, lot coverage by structure can exceed 20% by special permit. That's pursuant to 24069E. In that situation, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Here, we have no impact on the views and vistas from the public ways. There should be no impact of shadow. The ridge of the proposed addition is well below the existing ridge, and given the layout of the lot and nearby properties, I don't believe there should be any real shadowing effect. And there's no impact on nitrogen, as there's no change in the bedroom count. As to the size and height of the structures, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet, looking at the 36 nearby properties within a 300-foot radius. That shows that the dwelling, as proposed, is firmly within the range of the nearby properties. There's a number with larger gross floor area and larger footprints. This project, as proposed, represents an improvement for the owners. It reduces clutter on the lot, providing interior parking where none exists, and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what currently is there. The existing nonconformity is unaffected, and there's no new dimensional nonconformity. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits. I believe that this meets all the requirements of 243C, 24069E, and 24216. For these reasons, I believe this board can and should grant the special permit, and I would be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
Questions in the board? We'll start with Jerry this evening.
No comment.
Frank?
None at this time.
Mark?
Nothing right now.
Suzanne?
What's that?
It's, we have to ask any questions.
No, you don't.
I have no questions, no.
All right, just to make you earn your money. Probably a Scrivener's error on my part. This is on sewer, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That was it. Public comment. How would the board like to proceed?
I have some discussion.
Very well.
Okay, relative to our job to, on 269E, and says the board she'll take into consideration the size and height of structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadows and adjacent properties and such. The worksheet that Kevin gave us is, you know, like an aerial view, and, well, I just did a little, we're assigned this through 269E, but we aren't given a metric or a yardstick to really measure the comparison to other properties. So I did a little work here, and I'm just introducing this. I mean, at some point in time, I think we're going to have to have a measure on how we compare these buildings to the other structures in the neighborhood. And if I can just pass these out.
Go on, Kevin, please.
Now, as far as our consideration of the neighborhood, I think it's reasonable, especially in the Maravista, and I think this is subjective, you know, each neighborhood is going to differ. But I just took the homes on Narragansett, because you turn down the streets, and it's dead end to the end. So each of those little dead-end streets, especially on the little pond side, are kind of what I'd consider a neighborhood. They have a history, like, a lot of the streets were all created by one developer. So the houses are all similar, or maybe there's one or two styles, and that repeats itself all through. So... So first off, I couldn't find where you get the gross building area until just a few minutes ago. Actually, I looked back again, and you're obviously using the finished calculation.
So we base it on the assessor's records. Part of the issue is we're relying on what isn't entirely accurate information, because we have very detailed information for our projects, but not necessarily for the abutting projects. So I've, you know, a number of situations, I'll look at what the assessor's records list for square footage for a house that, you know, we're working on, and it's off by a few hundred or thousand square feet. So these lot comparison worksheets are intended to be a tool, but they're not meant to be probative.
No. But we're...I'm just saying, and I'm not saying that we have to apply this tonight or whatever, but I think it's incumbent upon us to come up with some kind of yardstick or metric. I mean, because we're instructed to here. So I just took the ones on the street, because I think it's a fair comparison to call Narragansett a neighborhood. And then I used, you know, standard deviation, you throw out the high and the low, and, you know, you have what you have. And basically, this exceeds the footprint, the average footprint, you know, with the standard deviation, because you got to throw out the highs and the lows. There's just...some are extremely low and some are extremely high. And in the case of this, you know, the footprint is up by 30%. The lot coverage is up by 43%. And I think that at some point in time, we're going to have to ask ourselves, in order to keep it within 26090, you know, how much are we willing to accept? Because these things have the potential to change the neighborhood forever. And, you know, I welcome anyone's comments on it. I don't suggest that this is the tool that we need to use, but I do suggest that we need some kind of a standard, more than we have now.
If I could just comment real quick, Mr. Moore. This is something I've struggled with for a long time, because we have to prepare these worksheets, and we know that the information we're using...I mean, no disrespect to our assessors, they do a fantastic job with the information they have available to them, but we're comparing apples and cats, because we have our floor plans, which have architecturally rendered square footages, and we have to, you know, base our...these calculations on numbers that, in many cases, we know aren't entirely accurate. They're a good start, but they're not really there. So, you know, I've never been a big fan of the lot comparison worksheet for that reason, but it's the information that we have. So I think it's part of...part of the toolbox that the board should be using when assessing this, which is inherently a subjective question. Mr. Finer noted that it was 30% increase, but 30% in this case is 280 square feet. It...30% sounds a lot more dramatic than 280 square feet, and that's above the average. So we've always looked...as I've prepared these, we've always looked at a radius of 300 square feet...or 300 feet, not square feet, 300 feet from the property. And in doing so, we came up with 36 properties. And of those 36, there were 10 that had larger gross floor areas and nine that had larger footprints. So when we're assessing this relative to the average size and height in the neighborhood, I think you can say that this is by no means an outlier and is well within the established range for houses in the neighborhood. I don't disagree with Mr. Finer in that this, you know, this is an imperfect tool that we're using, but it's what the board has asked for, so it's what we provide. And I think that having clarity for a lot of reasons is helpful moving forward. I don't think it should be, is this exactly on average, or is this, you know, based on numbers from the assessor's records, which just aren't always going to be accurate. Even looking at the square footage of the lots, we know those are off. This lot's 7,200 square feet. Based on the assessor's records, it's 7,187. That's not a big difference. Some of them have much bigger discrepancies. So I just think it's part of the toolbox that the board should be using.
So I don't disagree with Mr. Finer that having better instructions about how to deliberate or come to decisions is not necessarily a bad thing.
Oh, I agree.
To put it on the record, personally, the two things that either raise red flags for me or not when rendering these decisions based on the existing zoning bylaw, first, it's just...it's the neighborhood drive-by and just spitballing and looking at the existing structures and saying, okay, what is...is what is proposed, does this fit in or not? And that's very subjective, because it's my interpretation or the specific board member's interpretation of whether or not this project is in keeping with the neighborhood. The safeguard, and what I give great deference to, is neighbors and abutters who either come in and say, "We absolutely love this project and we're in favor," or "We don't take a position," or "This is too much and we don't like that." That, for me, when rendering a subjective decision, is what really kind of makes or breaks a decision. So I don't know how other people feel about the issue that Mr. Finer has raised. Mr. Duffy?
No, I don't disagree with Mr. Finer's statement that we should have some better guidelines, because they are kind of vague. And he's at...he said, "We're not applying them tonight," so I'm not, and I don't suspect the board will. But I think it's something that this board ought to have a discussion about sometime on some evening when we have kind of a light agenda. And if it behooves us, we could even ask the planning board to consider amending the bylaw to put in a little more specific language.
And to Mr. Klauer's point, you know, these aren't entirely accurate, playing like the finished part. I'm, you know, I've been in more than one house on Mare Vista that had unfinished upstairs. They were sold that way. And of course...
We actually...
We have no way to know whether it ever has been, and it's just not exact. But we don't have anything at the moment, and that's just my point. And I think it would make things easier, as Frank said. I mean, it's certainly something we have to discuss, and this is just the first step that I went and took. But, you know, it still has the, you know, the question needs to be asked, where are we going to begin to draw the line? And I know every case has its own individual points, but I mean, even, you know, some might say this is...this is pushing the upper limits at, you know, 30% footprint increase and a 43% over the lot coverage, the average lot coverage. But I mean, it's not a...it's something that I believe we need to do. That's why I made the first effort into it, and I think we need to pursue this.
Well, and I'm just going to put something on the record, just for...I'm not opposed to this application. One of the things that we are supposed to consider is the effect on affordability of housing in this town. And there is a reality that any time any modest home gets bumped up and out, it's no longer modest in price, and it raises other neighborhood values. So I would just merely encourage Mr. Klauer and other practitioners that that's an issue you might want to start addressing when any one of these special permits comes back before the board, because it is in our...it is in the zoning bylaws, a specific question we're supposed to ask. And it certainly has had an effect, I think, on...the Falmouth Heights that I grew up in in the '70s is not the Falmouth Heights that we have today by any stretch of the imagination.
Well, I was driving around the other day, and I think it's beyond that. You know, again, thinking of this, as I often do during the day, I mean, we basically lost the waterfront as far as this is concerned. But there's some neighborhoods that I think it's incumbent upon us to protect and to keep similar, and Mare Vista is no...there's no greater example of this than Mare Vista. And the amount of these that we get now is just so much of our caseload that I think we really need to come up with a metric.
So I'm going to rein this in a little bit. I agree that we need to add this, and let's...Loreen, I'm going to ask if you could perhaps suggest later on in the agenda this evening some dates where this could be...have a definitive discussion on this issue on the agenda that's properly noticed. But getting back to this particular project now, is there any more discussion the board would like to have?
Not without a metric. I don't...
How would the board like to proceed?
As the public.
Oh, we have...did I call for a public comment? My apologies. Yes. Public comment? None? Okay. Just want to make sure. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Do you want to close first? Did we close? Motion to approve.
Second. Second, and do we close?
Did we close?
No.
So there'll be a motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Post? Now, how would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Scott? Second, Suzanne. Findings?
The findings, let's see. It's in an RC zone. No overlay. It's in flood zone AE12. The lot size, although Kevin just corrected me, we have 7,200. It's on a public street. Lot coverage notes, by structure, existing is 1345, which is at 18.7. Proposed is 1709, which brings it up to 23.7 with 20% allowed. Structures with paving and parking, existing is 2298 at 31.9. Proposed is 2738...no, 2298, existing 2738, proposed at 38.1. Brings it up to...allowed is 40. The only existing nonconformity I have is the front yard setback. That's correct, yeah. And I think that's all I have.
243C, not more detrimental. 24069E.
Yep.
Testimony is the ridge height of the addition will be 17 feet 8 inches below the existing house on sewer.
Yeah.
Lot comparison sheets submitted. CONCOM had a negative termination. Any other findings?
No opposition. At the hearing, nothing in the file, correct?
Yep.
Any other findings? Conditions?
Conditions on the driveway. Applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit, post any required bond, the regular work hours.
Per plans.
Per plans, yep.
Erosion, sediment controls, water comments. Do we want to require the construction additions?
It says that note that the driveway as shown on the plans would not be approved for a driveway permit, so they need to...
We can condition they have to obtain one.
Yeah.
You need one to get a building permit, so...
No, that's all. Don't see anything else now.
No further lot coverage.
Yes.
Further permission from the zoning board.
Jerry, Frank, Mark, anything else?
No comment.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? It's a vote, 5-0.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Minutes which are going to be tabled, minutes of October 20th and 20...October 27th are tabled till the next meeting. We have, under open meeting number two, requests for insubstantial change modification of comprehensive permit number 06320, 29 Candle Lane, Falmouth, with a vote anticipated.
Good evening.
Honorable board and spectators, thank you for listening to this. So it's a new street in Falmouth. In many years, it's a new street. We're very, very happy to be residents of Falmouth. So the address is 29 Candle Lane. It's a two-story, single-family house with a full basement, which is perfect to put some, like gym appliances, like a bike and something else. So we are seeking to make a minor alteration in the basement just to build our full bathroom, so which will include a sink, a toilet, and a shower. And also, next to the bathroom, we're looking for like a little small counter with the sink. So when you do gym, you sweat, you go, maybe you drink a bottle of water, you can wash your hands, you can take a shower. So that would be a very nice alteration for us. I really hope that you can approve this little project. That's it.
Questions from the board? Start with you, Scott.
I guess my biggest concern here is that the project is based in a 40B, and I guess that, you know, when I look at...we don't...or my understanding is that I really have never seen the definition of what insubstantial change here is, and these seem to be a fair amount of changes. So I guess that's my concern at this point.
Mr. Chairman, there is a definition, but we don't have it here, and it's not on the record. And if I might ask, through the zoning administrator, to have town council provide us with a copy of the definition of insubstantial change?
That's very reasonable.
So DCHD has published...
It's in the regulations.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, the difference between substantial and insubstantial.
And we should know...we should know that, and it should be on the record, because that's a finding we have to make.
Questions, Suzanne?
It's DCHD's regulations, Frank.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So this is going to be an internal bathroom in the cellar, and the sink's going to be outside the bathroom?
There will be a sink inside the bathroom. Outside the bathroom, we would like to have a little counter with the sink.
So two sinks?
Yeah, two sinks.
Okay.
I have a question. Are there any windows in the basement?
Yes.
Can you describe them, please?
There are four windows. They are small windows.
How small?
How small? So there will be like one...they are in the plan. You should have all...you should have two pages of the plan of the basement, and you can see there are like four or five windows, one, two, three, four. So one window is in the bathroom, and there's also another window next to that counter that we want to build.
Are the windows high up on the wall, or...
They're high, yep.
They're high up?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Is there a door, or a bulkhead, or an exit from the basement to the outside?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
And where is that?
Yes, it is...it is right here.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. I only saw this tonight, so I'm sorry that I'm asking you questions.
Mark, a question?
Well, I look at the hand-drawn plan you have here, and it says kitchen counter, kitchenette.
Kitchenette, yeah.
It leads me to believe that this may be potentially living space, and makes me question why a half-bath might not be sufficient for your plans.
Well, when you exercise, you sweat, you want to take a shower. That's...
Two and a half baths upstairs, aren't there?
One is in master bedroom, so you don't want to go to the master bedroom on the first floor, and another full bathroom is on the second floor. So going from basement to the second floor is a little bit...
Isn't there another bathroom on the first floor, though?
Far.
A half?
Full.
Two fulls on the first?
No, not full on the first, right?
One full on the first in the master bedroom.
So only two right now?
Yes.
I thought there was two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah, two and a half.
So there's a full and a half.
There's a powder room on the first floor. There's a full bathroom on the first floor in master bedroom. So you have to go into the master bedroom, and then there will be a full bathroom. And the second full bathroom is located on the second floor.
All right, Mark.
I said with the indication, kitchenette counter. I just have to comment that it appears like potential living space.
Question, Jerry?
I guess it come down to, do we think this is substantial, insubstantial? I'd probably lean more on the insubstantial if we just condition that there can be no bedrooms on the...in the basement.
Or living space, really?
Excuse me?
Or living space. Right, not... Not living space, but living quarters.
Living quar, that's fine, yeah, yeah. So it's not just, yeah, it's not an apartment, no, living space is a good term.
I don't even like the sink outside.
To you, Noreen, did we receive additional filing about this issue today, this file?
We did receive an email this evening.
It says what? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yeah, so the email included that there was an ad posted that the house would sleep nine, maybe it was a rental option or something that was found.
I haven't had a chance to read that.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
So.
I think we should get the definition of substantial and insubstantial so we all know what we're talking about.
I'm not prepared to take a vote tonight.
I'm not either.
However, there may be public comment, so are there any additional follow-up questions to the board before we go to public comment? Public comment, please. If anyone would like to speak about this issue, if you kind of come up. Is there any public comment? All right.
So the, sorry, the email we had listed that it was advertised for a house that would sleep nine and parking for four cars. That was from, I guess, a real estate ad site.
So...
Identify this unit?
Yes. And the board has listed, you know, that this is limited to be a three-bedroom. So that would typically sleep six people. So I guess the question in the ad was, you know, if they're advertising for nine, that would be, you know, maybe too much for the subject, I mean, for the sewer system.
Well, hand parting.
Nope, excuse me, excuse me. The issue I think before the board is whether this is substantial or insubstantial, and I believe that Mr. Duffy has raised a very appropriate point that we need the legal definition before we can take an action on this, so I'll make a motion.
And then we'll all have the chance to read that as well.
Yes, so I'm going to ask that we continue this until the next, next meeting, which point we can then take this up again and have a vote.
Agreed.
Fine. Would someone like to second my motion?
I will second that, sir.
Mr. Finer, any discussion needed on the motion?
Just the date, what was the date again?
November 17th.
November 17th.
Gotcha.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ma'am, we're going to ask you to come back on the 17th. We'll review the information and we'll determine whether this is substantial or insubstantial at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have number three in open meeting agenda, 11818 Blue Flag Development LLC, three, excuse me, 836 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, review of operational plan with a vote anticipated. Good evening, sir. Madam Administrator, if you would just refresh the board's memory as to what is properly before the board this evening, unless the applicant is prepared to do that.
Yes, I could easily do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Dan Johnston. I'm an attorney with Mattery McLennan Fish. I'm joined by my colleague, Eliza Cox, as well as Mimi DuFault, the former general manager of Auto Camp, Josh Brillhart, the current interim manager, as well as Brad Guidi, who's a principal. As you requested, I think it would be helpful to talk about what the scope and why we're here tonight, as I think only one board member was on the board when the special permit was granted back in March of 2019. When that special permit was granted, the discussion amongst the board members was a concern about staffing levels and whether the Auto Camp site would have 24-hour staffing or would have staffing during the day depending on occupancy level. What was agreed at the time was that when occupancy was more than 30%, Auto Camp would have 24-hour staffing, so throughout the day and evening. When it was below 30%, Auto Camp was allowed to have staffing during the day only, but would provide emergency contact information at nighttime. The board at the time had concerns about possibly units at the site being used as affordable housing, especially during winter months when occupancy is lower than usual, as well as emergencies that might occur at nighttime and appropriate response to help guests who are having emergencies. So as far as the scope of tonight's meeting, that was kind of where the board had set the parameters. A year from the special permit, we'd come back to the board to talk about staffing levels. Obviously, this is 2019, COVID occurred and it's gotten pushed until tonight. So as far as current operations, Auto Camp has about 20 to 30 staff members on average on a day-to-day basis at the property. But even when occupancy levels are below 30%, Auto Camp has decided to have at least one staff member there 24 hours a day. They've decided to do that even though they're not required to do so. In the winter months, like I said, have the least occupancy numbers, but there hasn't been any major emergencies or concerns over guests using the property as affordable housing. Furthermore, when occupancy levels have been low or there have been emergencies in the area, Auto Camp has provided shelter for organizations like EverSource and other emergency personnel. Lastly, before we go to questions, we are in receipt of Attorney Edward Kirk's letter to the board, and we'd just like to note that the concerns raised in the letter don't fall within the scope of tonight's meeting. Otherwise, we're happy to answer questions and I have members of the team ready to provide answers.
Board questions? Jerry, I'll start with you.
I don't think I, I didn't see Attorney Kirk's letter, so I'm dumbfounded.
No questions at this time?
No questions.
Frank?
I saw Attorney Kirk's letter the other day. I believe he raised two issues, one general noise issue and one was related to the operation of air conditioning units on the individual trailers, which appears to be offensive to some people in the neighborhood, but I wasn't quite sure where that was. But whether that's within our purview, I'm not sure right now, but those were the two issues he raised.
There were a couple of concerns, but like I said, they don't relate to staffing levels, especially at nighttime.
No, they don't.
Mark?
So would those issues have to be a separate complaint if they rise to that level?
I believe that they're within the purview of the zoning board to address based on the special permit at this point. It would be my interpretation of the special permit at what's before us.
Right, so this group has been granted a special permit. When the permit was issued, the board just requested the applicant come back as a follow-up to ensure that staffing was sufficient. There have been some issues that have been raised, including by Attorney Kirk. The proper enforcement for any complaints is through the zoning enforcement officer that is the building commissioner. And if he deals with those complaints or the butter spine that that's insufficient, then they're entitled to appeal back to the zoning board once they have the building commissioner's determination in writing. They do not, at this particular meeting, have the opportunity to come back to you to open up the permit further than you have requested.
Questions?
I think my hands are tied.
Suzanne, thank you. Scott?
No questions.
I have no questions at this time.
Good evening. My name is Steve Weineg. I live at 64 Loop Road. I, in addition to being a homeowner, I'm also the president of Sibyls Place Homeowners Association. I have with me tonight also Tom Esselman, who's the president of Sacanasset Hills Association. With respect to the board and the attorney, I had understood we were here tonight to review the operations overview and it was not specifically stipulated in any notices that I saw that it was specifically limited to staffing levels. But with the, taking the board's time into account, and I will cut to the chase instead of, I think we all know the reason we have an issue is the noise that's being generated. And it does, it does in one case relay back specifically to their operations overview. The two sources of noise, you're correct, Mr. Duffy, that one was air conditioning-related. Mr. Esselman can speak to that if, if that's appropriate tonight. I'm here really to speak more about the noise generated from their operations as an event, venue weddings, large parties, live bands, et cetera, which affects basically all of the residents of the neighborhood, of which I'm here basically speaking on behalf of 150 homeowners in the immediate neighborhood, all of which have been adversely affected. So rather than belaboring the points, I will just cut to the chase and basically, since tonight's hearing is specifically about their operations overview, I would like to point out that on their operations overview submitted to this board on March 20th, 2019, as part of their review process, it specifically says objectionable noise is not allowed at any time, nor is amplified music allowed. Seems very clear to me. Ultimately, the overall policy question is whether Auto Camp's current operation management advertising of the former campground as a venue for entertainment events and loud amplified music is lawfully within the letter of intent and spirit of what the board had in mind when it granted the special permit at the time. I'm not asking for it to be reopened tonight. I understand the process of filing for a zoning enforcement action, et cetera. I am not an attorney, but I'm familiar with the process. We're not looking to do any of that. We want to get some direction from the board and we want Auto Camp to cooperate and be the good neighbors that they claim to be, which so far we haven't had a lot of evidence of. So I appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak and I'm happy to have a dialogue anytime about this, but ultimately the goal is not to disturb the lives of 150 homeowners that are your neighbors, because right now it's an untenable situation. Thank you very much.
Board have any questions?
Just for the board's purposes, the select board is the town board that is authorized to grant special occasion permits. So I think as part of the concern, it sounds like perhaps the neighbors are concerned with the permissions that the select board is granting, which is not also within this board's purview. So I know that's not helpful, but I think, you know...
Well, it is helpful because...
Better to address, yeah.
I'm just, want a clarification. Are you saying that each individual event requires a special permit from the select board or?
Under certain parameters, yes.
Okay, so we'll have to examine that as well.
So, right, so it'd either be, you know, potentially a complaint to the select board, but otherwise to the building commissioner.
Okay, I was aware of the building commissioner aspect, not of the select board, but as I said, we're not here looking for a legal battle. We want to come to a mutually agreeable solution to this problem because it is a problem and there are a lot of people that it's a problem for. So with that, I'll, I'll turn to the podium or to the next person.
Other public comment? Council, if you'd like to briefly respond to some of the concerns?
You know, I think that Auto Camp is obviously very willing to work with their neighbors and has been, and we have the staff here who's happy to talk on that respect, but I think again, as has been mentioned, the focus tonight is about staffing levels and whether that's, that flexibility can be maintained into the future as far as 30% occupancy levels above and, above and below.
Are you seeking modification or?
No, we're not seeking a modification to the special permit. In fact, it'd be our preference if this provision continued indefinitely, giving Auto Camp the flexibility to have staff members available during the day and if they choose in the future not to have 24-hour staffing, though they currently do and have no plans in changing
Was the board aware there was going to be weddings and all these functions when they voted on this?
For the zoning administrator.
So there was a campsite at this property.
I live not too far.
And so I think, just to summarize, the intent was that they were going to provide this nouveau camping experience. I think it was new enough that they didn't know how expansive this might become or not. They do have a handsome clubhouse there that's available for the guests to use. They did approach the select board for, I think, some special occasion permits and Mr. Guidi can speak to that.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brad Guidi. I'm one of the principals of Blue Flag Partners. Thank you for your comments. Look, the bottom line is we are trying to be good neighbors since the beginning. Obviously, the plans were fully developed when it was approved. It always showed a second-floor meeting space. We do have small gatherings there, like any campsite, family reunions, things like that. When there is music, it is always contained to the second floor with the doors shut. Beyond that, we, I mean, we... Go ahead, yeah. We can have a dialogue because I think it's important. We, look, we really do want to be good neighbors. When music is played, it is played on the second floor of the clubhouse with the doors shut. Am I, am I misstating anything? Mimi has been the general manager for the past several years.
Just step up to the podium and identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Hi, Mimi DuFault. I was the pre-opening GM and was the operating GM up until March. I'm still with Auto Camp and still am supporting Auto Camp Cape Cod, which is why I'm here here today.
But not at this place?
Yes.
You work?
Yeah, so I work, I work for Auto Camp. I support the East Coast region right now as people and culture. So from a history standpoint, I have been there since September of 2020, up until physically on property as the GM till April 1st. And then I still work with the company, I'm still present at the property two to three days a week sometimes, so I'm fully aware of the events that take place. I still am getting, receiving direct communication. So as far as the events go, we have small, medium, I guess you could say even medium to large size events. We tent the back lawn on occasion for weddings, but as far as the noise goes, we contain that to the second floor. At eight o'clock, the doors are closed and then the music is retained inside of the building. When we started hosting and selling weddings, we also work with Falmouth Police Department and we request police detail. So on a number of occasions when we've had these events, we've had police detail directly right on property, also to support us, to make sure that we're within compliance of the noise.
I think it should also be noted that anybody who is in attendance is staying on the property.
Correct.
These aren't, these aren't parties or things where people are coming in from the outside. They're all staying at the property, so they're using the amenities of the property.
Mark?
Now, do you, when you have these events, do you get permits from the selectmen?
No, this was all approved in our pre-opening. It was all discussed with our neighbors in advance. This is part of the functions of the property.
They're guests of the property.
Yeah. By the records of any complaints?
I think that there hasn't been any penalties or fines levied against the organization. I think that, you know...
That wasn't the question, though.
Like any, like any hotel organization, you know, they... Like any hotel organization, you know, they do get complaints occasionally about noise, but I believe that they've responded to that, and they have staff onsite twenty-four hours a day.
So I'm going to rein this in just a little bit about what is properly before us. It's the operational plan, I believe, about staffing. Is that correct, or...
Mm-hmm.
And you're just asking the special permit to be, at this point, be renewed for a period of two years?
Well, the specific provision about staffing, that's the one that was coming up a year after the special permit was granted, and that specific provision, again, allowed AutoCamp to have twenty-four-hour staffing when occupancy was above thirty percent, but flexibility when occupancy was below thirty percent. So our request is that that be continued, that flexible staffing model.
Question is, is one-year reasonable? Let's have a little discussion on that. My...I don't think one-year would be unreasonable. My concern, I think that somebody, given the posture, what some of the complaints about the neighbors are, is that I think someone should be there to answer the phone if there's excessive noise or problems or anything operationally related.
May I just follow up with...
If it's not about...if it's about noise, sir, it's not properly before us, but...
It's actually about staffing and about following the complaints.
Certainly, by all means.
Because you've heard some things that aren't quite correct.
First of all, their own website says that you only need to book five units to book a party there. It's on their website as their marketing. Second of all, on October 24th, 2021, I personally witnessed on Palmer Ave a Cape Destinations bus pull in full of guests.
Were they standing on the property?
I'm glad that Ms. Dufau is here, because I sent her multiple emails, called her many times. I can document the dates, but I won't waste your time here with it tonight. Finally got an email saying, "Good morning. As we have shared with neighbors since the beginning, please contact us directly when you have concerns, so we can address them immediately." Never got a call back. I had to send email after email. I've got a list, as I said, I won't bother you, but, I don't know, fifteen or twenty occasions with these parties? And I'm telling you, I live twelve hundred feet from AutoCamp. We have to close our windows and doors, turn on our air conditioning, and we're still blasted out of bed. And it does not end at eight o'clock, and it's not contained to the inside of the building. It's just not, period. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think that one of the things we could consider is that if there's a function going on, there has to be a manager on presence, even if the occupancy is below thirty percent.
That would occur.
And has.
Yeah, that's the policy.
But I would just comment that, you know, we're not an enforcing agency, and we're here to take appeals from enforcement actions. So I think right now, we're getting a little bit beyond what we can do tonight.
I agree.
I don't want to grant them for more than one year, though.
So they have a permit to operate?
Yep.
The operations plan was the only piece where they were asked to come back. So is...if you wanted to have them return in a year to evaluate, right, but it wouldn't affect their permit, it would just be discussing the operation?
Yep.
Well, it sounds like that operations plan is still a bit in flux, so I think a year would be a reasonable request.
Appropriate.
Appropriate is a better word.
Chair Morse, do you mind if I...
Certainly.
I think that our client would be okay if the condition was changed to one staff member there twenty-four hours a day, and then that just be the condition as part of their special permit, instead of coming back every year to talk about staffing levels.
I'll defer to the will of the board on this issue of proposal.
We definitely want them to come back in a year, because it's...I don't know which one to believe here, so...
And it's in flux.
It's in flux, exactly.
Scott, please.
Go see him in a year. Yeah. Frank? I don't agree with that, and this problem...this isn't the only place in town where this is a problem. There are restaurants, for example, which have attendance or events, and every door is closed, and you can still hear it down the street. It's just the nature of music, especially when you get amplified music. It just travels.
Jerry, give me your comments.
I think everybody said it, you know, I'd be in favor of a year.
Maybe you should employ a sound engineer.
How would the board like to proceed, then?
Make a motion for one year?
Schedule one for a year.
Evaluation, or whatever the term might be called.
Do you want the zoning administrator to draft an affirmative motion, have them come back in a year?
Let's say yes.
Yes, yes. Yes, sorry.
There was second.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel, we'll see you in a year. Thanks so much. Next up on the open meeting agenda is number four, board updates.
I wanted to tell something, but my English wasn't enough. I'm from Ukraine. My accent is horrible. That's why Katie is not allowed by herself. But we don't want to ram base, and I'm so sorry. We just want to use it for our...
Thank you, ma'am, but we can't take additional testimony. We're out of order on the agenda, but thank you for your comments. I can't take any more additional testimony on it.
Yeah, I just want to say something, because I didn't have...I didn't want to do it when people are sitting here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board updates.
We're still welcoming, Mr. Duffy.
Absolutely, we are.
You're still welcome, Frank.
I haven't worn him out, worn him out.
Haven't worn his welcome out yet.
Number five, board discussion.
We do still have a vacancy for an associate member, you know, just for the listening public. If anybody's interested, they should apply at the select board to join your wonderful group.
And again, just to...if you could find some time in the next, I would suggest maybe forty-five to sixty days a night where we're light to properly notice and get some of those issues we discussed about how we are going to make determinations about size, bulk, and so on.
Averages, yeah.
Averages and several others that have come up in the last two hearings.
Yeah, it's been...I think it's been ongoing, and as counsel represented this evening, it is very difficult even utilizing town records to do comparisons, because the assessors are pretty explicit about not utilizing their data for any specific purpose. They find that they're, you know, providing the information they have available, and it's for their purposes for assessing, not for other boards to utilize in some other way. So we're having trouble getting accurate representations, and the other part, too, is that the town doesn't explicitly provide lot coverage in a reliable way either. So, you know, we in the office, and mostly Ashley, are trying to help direct people who are bringing their own applications on how to provide this information to the board. So they're trying to do the best they can, and, you know, you can pretty reliably get lot size, for example, and certainly can go through the neighborhood and pick out how many are one-story, two-story, whatever. But as far as actual lot coverage, lot, you know, size of homes, there's a lot of flex in there. And so I think while the bylaw suggests that you're looking at an average, part of what's really important for the board is to look...do the site visits and look at what you're going to find reasonable.
But to add to that, you're absolutely correct. Those inconsistencies on the individual properties will lose themselves once you use a proper amount of addresses to get this average. I mean, it basically disappears. One makes the other wash, and if you use, you know, you throw out the lows and the highs. I mean, there has to be something that we come up with, and I mean, if everybody can just think about it, I mean, think how you determine it, because the reality is that, I mean, these things probably used to be twenty-five percent of the caseload, and now they're getting up to be seventy-five percent of the caseload. And it won't take very long to change the whole face of these things, and we're tasked to do something about this, and we're just short at the moment, and we need something.
I guess maybe, too, in the near future, get another affordable update. Are we still at the seven-point-two percent or whatever we were, affordable housing?
Yeah, we have increased, but the state hasn't confirmed membership, and so certainly when the state does confirm, which should be...
Can we get the draft number, or...
Yeah, I can circulate that. Yep, absolutely.
I don't see any fortyBs coming up, but just kind of give us another gauge of where we're at.
Yeah, there's conversation. So also for the board's purpose, so many of you are probably aware, bylaw re-qualification will be back before town meeting again. This is essentially the second go-around. What they found was that perhaps there hadn't been an explicit enough instruction to the town about the changes that were made. The intent for the re-qualification was to be sort of a cleanup. However, the professionals that helped the town work on the bylaw re-qualification also brought in state law changes that the town needed to import, so there was maybe some difficulty in describing that for the town. But it is obviously important that the town be in line with state law. So again, that will be before town meeting again for the re-qualification, and there's also an open space review that is ongoing. There's a survey that's available, so you're all invited to participate in that.
Future agenda items, other than what we've discussed.
Going back, did we reach out to the planning board as to what their original thoughts were? I know we got the actual minutes, and they were sort of...
Oh, for the...for a better description?
Of average height, or how they would approach it.
I have not heard anything further. I got what came from town meeting was...which was essentially a blanket vote, which didn't help at...
Depends on the blanket vote, so there was no discussion.
Didn't help at all, right. So, you know, I have reached out to see if we can get further information, but nothing has been returned, so...
Oh, what their thought was at the ti...okay, so...
Yeah, so, you know...
Can we have a good background?
Yeah. But I think still, you know, the numeric data that's available is very difficult.
I agree.
You know, people are looking at their own homes, and they're looking at the assessor's database, and they're saying, "Well, my information on my home doesn't match what the assessors have."
Yes.
And now I'm also supposed to take that maybe alternate information and use it through the neighborhood as well. So there's just a concern that it's just not really accurate, and so the board has to sort of look at it in a fuzzy kind of way, in that they're trying to depict as best possible what is existing, but it's not black and white.
No, I mean, it's...when you're talking about a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot lot coming up at seventy-one-eighty-seven, I mean, that's just...it's an insignificance. I mean, it shouldn't be a concern when you're trying to put a numerical value on this. It's just, what formula are we going to use, or what can we agree on? And it's going to be a moving target, too. I mean, you know, depending on the neighborhoods, but again, I mean, we have this task, and we don't have a, you know, something to do it with. So being off, you know, a quarter of one percent isn't...shouldn't be an issue or shouldn't hold up anybody from trying to come up with something, because short of that, we've got nothing. Sorry to pick out the difficult problems every week.
No, no, I just wish I had a cleaner solution.
We can make one. We can come up with something.
I...we might have to go back to the planning board, because I think...
It's a possibility.
The mathematical or the engineering approach may not be practical, and maybe we expand upon our policy that we have on bulk density.
But I mean, we can't...I mean, we can't throw out the math if they're giving us these twenty and twenty-five percent numbers, I mean...
I'll defer to later. You know, we can have narrative discussion on what those things mean.
Got a lot to talk about here.
Absolutely. It could be added to a future agenda item. Any other future agenda items? All right, next meeting is November 17th, 2022, 6:30 here at Town Hall.